Six o'clock. We'll bring the meeting to order. Zach's running a little late. He's going to join us. Review and approve the minutes for the 25th, October 25th, meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes from October 25th, 2023?
Okay, my second motion. Was there any discussion or any changes on any of that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And should I just move to the agenda? Do we have any adjustments?
Yeah, I have, Gary and I worked on his adjusted 2020 snowmobile trail use.
Okay.
That he got, that they talked about.
The letter or whatever?
Yeah, it's just stating all the roads that they used.
Oh, okay.
And it hadn't been done since 1994, so we updated it. And I thought we could add to the agenda.
Okay.
Somewhere at the end, whatever. You guys read and see what you think.
Okay.
So we can just put that at the end or whatever if you want.
Yep.
Jenny, Deborah, are you guys here for?
Library.
Oh, library.
Library, okay.
Library.
Okay. That's it for adjustments. Okay, so I guess we'll start out with Alan Eastman and the knotweed discussion, which I sent you an email back today. I just got back, so I kind of briefly looked, went over it, but I guess we're looking for more explanation and plan.
So as you know, we've been working on this a lot this year. And I very briefly summarized the fact that this week Gary put on a new operating procedure from our experiences. It's on the website. Everybody can get to it. I also sent her an updated, a new page that we hope will be in the town report, as we discussed before. And the rest of it really comes down to funding. And as you encouraged us to write grants, the grant deadline we're going for is February sometime.
Okay.
And I sent you a map.
Okay.
Which actually shows you the area we're trying to, we're planning to hit, which is about Free Acres, all the way from the new cemetery to the Baptist church.
Okay.
And we've actually already got written permission from most people. Here's our little written document.
Okay.
Most people have signed this already, willing to go. Whether we get the funding or not, who knows, you know? Do they fund grant applications?
Okay.
The specific, and I'll come back to that. There's a couple of questions on that round that I want to check with you. But the main issue here is whether or not we can put some money into town budget.
Okay.
To address town land. And so in the document I sent you yesterday, it lists a number of the town lands that are included in the grant. Then it has a table of other town lands, which we hope we ought to attack over the next three, four, five years, with estimated costs as to how much that would cost, that would take.
Okay.
And so the bottom line of this, of course, right at the bottom here is a really nice picture at the back of the cemetery. If you've ever climbed down the hill behind the cemetery and seen this beautiful swath of knotweed down there.
Okay.
Ground. Anyway, so the rough budget we've come up with is approximately $3,000 a year.
Okay.
Whether or not that could be added to the town property maintenance line, which was the line that you used for the 550 we got this year, or whether it should be put in as a reserve account, or whether you don't approve of putting it at all. And that's a summary of that, that piece of it. And I'll come back to grants in a moment, but let's discuss that, I guess.
Okay, so, so, but if you're going to file for a grant and we're going to get grant money and then we have to chip in a certain portion to go with that or whatever, no, it'll just be grant, if you get the grant, it'll be?
They're separate pieces. The grant is for the downtown area, which includes the town park.
Okay.
Up to the new cemetery that we're planning on, there's a bit there. And then there's a bit at the other end behind the Baptist church, which is GM Hucopery, which is usually the town only. So there's town land built in that. So that's a different issue. The money, the, what's listed on here for potential support in the budget is other town lands.
Okay.
Such as the second and third spraying on Clark's Landing, the, that we did this year.
Okay.
The, there's another couple of areas up on Clark's Landing. There's the railroad bed, which is a really nice patch that blocks the whole of the railroad bed, which is fine in winter because Gary clouds it down, but you can't ride the bike down there or hike down there during summer. So that's the money that we're looking for. Those are the kinds of properties we're talking about, we're putting into town budget. If we don't get the grant, we're still stuck. We can't do anything on the town park and the other areas.
Okay.
And so that money would be, I guess some of that would be used for that.
Okay, so I think it's a good idea and to try to do a small amount of control with the knotweed and try to see what we could possibly, you know, do with a, with a plan for the town. And I'm definitely open to the idea of, of putting together something like that. It seems like if we had, if we did something with our maintenance, town maintenance, maybe budget would make the most sense if the selectmen.
Add a line.
Add a line, knotweed treatment or something. If the selectmen in the future decide or whatever, otherwise we have to put it out to a town vote and whatever. For $3,000, I don't think it's a huge amount to try to, to work on this, this, this major problem. And maybe it'll become a bigger thing and do more money and whatever. But I mean, I'm for $3,000 for a budget.
Yeah, I don't think you really know until we do the whole budget.
Right, right. So I mean, what do you think, Cam?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm certainly receptive to it right now. You know, I mean, I think, you know, like Lisa points out, the bigger discussion will happen on Budget Day where everything is looked at. But I, it's something I, I think you have support on. And that, that decision will have to be made in December.
And if it becomes a bigger discussion, then we can put it on the ballot and do something like that.
But it's not, it's not a heck of a lot and it's not a huge ask, so.
Right, so.
I think you could also, I think showing some commitment to the town. We're trying to increase awareness, that some people can take care of their own knotweed.
Right.
And that document encourages them to do that if they can. Obviously along the river they can't.
Right.
But I think if we were able to carry out downtown, that's really creating awareness.
Right.
And as we meet with other people, it's really a loose string.
Okay, yeah. You have my support on it.
Thank you.
I guess we'll just have to have some more discussion about it and see where we're at in budget, at budget time and so on and so forth, to figure out where we can fit that in and make sure we can do something with that.
So I've got to come back to the grant, because the grant we're putting in is for watershed, is it not environmental conservation, whatever? I sort of want confirmation and I'm assuming it's submitted by the town.
Well, I don't know all this, this, I don't know.
I'm sure, I mean, I'm certainly, I would not expect.
Generally, Mike, we don't end up doing any of our own grant submissions.
They still come under the town usually.
Okay.
I guess the question is, this grant is what, is it federal or state?
Estate.
State? Yeah, I think I would just look at the application form and maybe reach out to the group and just say, is this usually municipalities that are doing it? I'm assuming it would be.
Yeah, I mean, on the application form, it can be municipality or some, this, that, the other private group.
It's probably not going to be Alan, right?
Yeah, well, there's two questions. Presumably it isn't Alan. I asked, well, you heard my question about who is the contact person as well, whether the contact person is Kerry as an administrator, is the select board man is as the authority is or is it?
Yeah, so like with VORC and things like that, Mike is the contact.
Yeah.
So he's our guy. And he represents the town by being the chair of the planning commission, right? And he is the interface along with Gary and I to the select board on a lot of things around that grant. So I think that probably sounds like it would be a similar model, right? But I, if that happens, you would need some sort of, I would take designation or something.
Right, and the select board will sign off on it, so on and so forth, but we, you know, we don't usually sit down and write grants.
I'm not expecting you to.
Are in charge of them and whatever.
You need to write it. You don't know any of that knotweeds.
Or grants.
Or grants.
So, so that's fine. I guess, I mean, you know, generally it's a planning committee thing that are working on something and blah, 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 submitting something and we're working on this and that and how's the board feel? Yep, we work with you and whatever. We got it now. We got to do this, this and this. And so it'd be really kind of the same idea.
Is there one on the planning commission?
I would say that this work, we talk about conservation commissions around the state usually. We don't have one. Actually, the default conservation commission in a town that doesn't have one is the planning commission. So that, that type of natural resource work, they're probably used to getting applications from conservation commissions.
Okay.
And friends of some river or friends of some swamp.
So that means the planning commission wants to work in this?
Appoint him.
Appoint him.
He asked me this question too, and I didn't, I didn't know the answer at the time.
What's that?
Appoint him to write the grant.
Okay, so we're appointing you to write the grant.
Okay. It's already written.
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just brings everything to you.
Find umbrella or?
Right, well, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to say.
Is there? Yeah. No, no, I think that's, yeah.
The way it's going to work is he's going to write the whole thing. They're going to get to a point where they print out something with all the information and someone's got to sign it, a town appointed. It says, appointed, you know, some town official signs it. You scan that, submit it, and then the contact for the grant would still be you, that's fine, but it would just have the sign off on the select board. Like there's, I forgot what the form was, but like Form 2 or something.
So I can do an appointment letter, so he has something and?
Yeah.
What do we want to, you've been working under the invasive species working group, Alan? What does the name of your group?
Yes, we were advised not to be a committee or a commission because then we have to have regular meetings on a, and a frequent.
You were just informed.
You can see where I get my advice from, but.
So does that make sense to appoint him the head of the invasive species working group? Is that, or does that make sense to you, Mike, or?
Yeah, I mean, he can submit anything on behalf of the town. You just need that signature page that says.
It doesn't even really need to be appointed. He can just do it all.
I think so.
And then the select board is just.
Yeah, you're not someone who's.
You don't have to make him appoint something. He's going to fill it all out.
Yeah.
Submit it to you. You're going to review it and sign off on it.
Okay.
Remember when I did this, it was, I came to you and it was like the form said like town official and I was like, am I a town official? And he goes, yes. He is not. So he just needed one of your signatures and then submit it on behalf of the town.
Easier.
Okay.
Cleaner.
Okay, we'll go back.
Good, thank you. Good work.
Thank you, Alan.
EV charging station, Dennis Casey.
I haven't heard anything from him.
Okay, so we'll scratch that off. No show. We just had a, I don't remember where we left that for updates. Where were we working?
Well, he had given me an update last week, so it might have just not been enough time with only the one week in between.
Okay.
So I thought his thing said he was going to come to the next meeting, but it might have just been too soon.
Okay.
Probably no new information.
Nothing. Okay. Okay.
He'll be here next morning.
All right, VORC grant bid opening, which we sort of talked about that. And we have it right here too.
I finally printed them.
I want one.
Everybody gets a copy.
Everybody gets a copy.
Yep.
I need one for the, just to know where I was writing them. So pretty.
First picture was rotten on the cover.
Nice.
Where's the knotweed?
It's right there on the cover. Actually, we think you treated that part. Might be page two or something.
Mine.
Wow.
So as I mentioned last week, this is the sole bid received for the planning for the next use of the agreement on power property and parts of the dump dump that we may never use or that we don't use.
Okay. It's quite a, it's quite a thing. Is there anything that we, like, stands out that we need to be aware of or anything on this without?
The cost is at the same cost that was estimated. The timeframe is they can do it before the, the grant period ends.
Okay.
It's the exact scope that we sent them for our bid, our RFP, which I copied out of the grant, is what they sent back with a lot more detail of what they do.
Right.
And really, this is, there's no, you go into this without really knowing what this property is going to become. So we do this charrette, public gathering, and we gather information from town, from townspeople to see what maybe is missing in town and what they're interested in having. You know, we walk the property with them, sort of brainstorm ideas for, for, you know, what it could be.
Okay.
And then we get a plan in the end that says, you know, here's where the town's interested in having this, or here's where people are interested in that, or here's a way we can incorporate the rail bed into the village, so maybe a bridge or something like that. None of this gets built. It's just plans for the future. And I pictured the planning commission pretty much administering this entire project.
Right, okay.
Or this is part of it. So we would still come to you with plans and things like that for review. So when we have a draft concept plan and things like that, we'll come to the board, show it to you, invite you all to meetings and everything.
Which we're so good at coming to.
Yeah, well, I can bring it here too.
Well, let's not get too carried away. Not that we, we don't like you to come with information and stuff.
It's the plan for maybe a five.
So what do we need to do? We need to approve this, accept the bid.
SE group.
SE group, okay. So we make a motion that we accept the SE group bid for?
$43,725.
For the town plan and?
We're calling the Groton Gateway Project.
Okay, for the Groton Gateway.
Which has the goal of utilizing newly acquired green space and existing green space and creating some sort of plan for a connection to the village from that green space.
Did you get all that?
Yeah.
Or the board, you could just say VORC planning.
Okay, so.
So you made the motion.
I made the motion. I need a second.
Second.
And then there's discussion, which we just had discussion.
Yep.
And then we vote on it. So all in favor of this plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Which we're just doing this officially. We already.
Yeah.
Now, now.
You're the only one to submit it a bid.
Same conversation we had last.
Right. But at least we had something to go with.
Yeah.
So that's good. Okay, good job.
I have nothing for the planning commission. I'm going to duck out. It'll be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hey, oh, we do have highway. I have some, uh, no, I didn't have highway.
I didn't see an email.
No, nothing from highway, okay? Nothing, you've heard it from highway, okay? I was thinking fire, treasurer.
Okay, there's quite a bit in the folder for you all to sign. I handed out budgets. The budgets look a little different. They have the line on the right side to help figure out what departments will use, this is what departments will use for Budget Day.
Right.
So you'll see 2022 budgeted, actual 2023 budgeted, and then where we're at now. So I just thought I would give you, I'll probably print it again because we'll do it December 2nd and we'll have all November expenses in there. So, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like and what it will look like for Budget Day.
Okay.
So all departments got that. Member taxes are due on Friday. Open all week, 7:30 to 5:00, open Friday. And just wanted to say that we have the night box that goes right into the town clerk's locked box. So just wanted that to be said. I have a couple of other things, but they fall further down on the agenda, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. Kerry, town clerk.
I gave you a copy of the species study.
Yes.
Just to have, he's going to come, looks like a, oh. He's coming to the next meeting to go over it.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's all clipped together there.
Okay.
But I just printed it so you can review it before then.
Thank you.
And I did, in your packet there too, is an email I received from the state. So it is the 250th anniversary.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Coming up in 2027, but they're preparing now for the next three years. And they want all the towns to kind of adopt, I guess they're not, I'm not saying they want, but they're offering all the towns to adopt this resolution. To join it, I guess. They're trying to, you know, they're going to try to do a lot of history around the state over the next couple of years. So that is in there for you to look at and we can decide on the next meeting or another meeting. But I printed you the template and then I printed it just with our.
See, I had that stuff on it, yeah, okay.
If you wanted to do that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, kind of talks about a person being a person or a group, you know, kind of being another committee of people that will get the information and help try to spread it around.
Okay.
And.
So I think we can review that.
Yeah, we'll talk about it next time. They didn't really give a deadline. They're just trying to reach out to all the towns.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that is really all I have.
So and you did say James was coming next meeting?
Yeah. James said he'll come next meeting.
Hello. Sorry, Emily.
Oh, okay. I think we got everything just about covered.
I don't know. We could appoint him to another thing.
Oh. You're in charge of the knotweed.
The knotweed. One act is now on your shoulders too.
250th anniversary.
You got a full list. You got to form a commission.
There you go. So we accepted the Groton Gateway master plan, which remember we talked about that?
Yep.
And that's the thing for that. And we talked about the knotweed stuff and the $3,000 budget of.
Property upkeep.
Property upkeep for.
Moving forward.
Doing some, some maintenance on, really knotweed is, is trying to kill it. So we're going to talk about that more at Budget Time and.
And I was just finishing up and I think that's all I really have exciting to talk about, so.
Okay, thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Kerry.
Assistant Assessor Dorky.
So I left the pictures kind of finalized, the ones that we had, that I had, that I updated and got up NIMRQ yesterday. And I had an email back within an hour from Adam at NIMRQ. He said he can update the data this week and then will get back to me as far as looking and checking and making sure that the changes have been made.
Okay.
So that's, that's a big step.
Wow, okay, great.
Just wanted to make you aware that we have property that sold with the town property value is $320,000 and the property is sold for $854,000.
Okay.
So that's going to impact everything.
Okay.
So it's a property transfer for this year, for next year, you know, not right now.
Right, 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 right.
2024. And another thing that we just want to keep in our, we've talked about the printer, a new printer for thinking about that at Budget Day, but I think we also, you also want to be thinking about budgeting more money for reappraisal. We don't know which way the state's going to go, if the state's going to continue to give us the $8 per parcel for reappraisal, or if they're going to take it over. Some of the other towns are looking at like $8 a parcel, $125 per parcel. And for our 872 parcels, that comes to $109,000. And then if you split that up, if we're going to be doing it every six years, that comes to $18,000, is what another town is thinking. This is how they're doing the math.
Okay.
We're currently doing $1,250, I think, $1,200.
How many parcels is it again?
800 and, there are 872 parcels.
Okay.
And $125 a parcel is what that town was thinking and that was Hartland, which is bigger than us. But anyway, it's kind of a ballpark. And he was, that listener had done some background and some, you know, information on this. And then every six years, so we need to think about having that money every six years.
Okay.
We need to increase somewhere above $1,200 to start putting in with the town fund with what the state is giving us.
Okay, and there's, and there still is no.
No, there's a.
Thought from the state on increasing what they provide.
No, there's a study that's being done now that I think has to be done by either December something or January something, a report back to the legislature and then, we may have a clearer picture, but we may not. That may not cover actually, you know, who's going to do reappraisals. But at this point, I think one of the, one of the points is that we're going to be looking at doing reappraisals every six years. So we got to have money for that somehow, either from the state or from our funds.
And so you're, you're anticipating based off the calculation with Hartland, that we're looking at $109,000 for appraisal?
For appraisal, right?
Every six years.
Every six years.
Every six years, sure.
$109, and so that comes out to $18,167 if we do that for six years, per year.
But if all the reappraisals end up being 300 to 800,000 for the sale of the property, it will pay for itself, right?
I don't think so. I'm sure of that now.
It's necessarily.
But I'm not going to put my bet on that. You can, but I'm.
I'm just saying.
So, and I, and that's just more information for the budget.
So we'll talk about that more at Budget Time.
Yes.
Okay.
That's pretty much a high list.
Okay, thank you, Dorky.
You're welcome.
And that obviously, sorry, I'm going to ask one other question. That obviously doesn't include what we're doing for reappraisal next year.
No, no. And see, once we get to doing that, then John and I will keep track of. And see, once we get to doing that, then John and I will keep track of regular hours and reappraisal hours, so that'll come, I would have put more of that for reappraisal money.
And we have a chunk of money now.
Right, right. What it looks like is there's 64,586 in there if you do the math.
Is that the money for this year?
That is up to date this year.
That is up to date this year, yeah.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, five, eight, six.
So, that's a good...
As of...
Need 50,000 next year.
But, well, I mean, we're talking it's gonna cost us, is that right?
That 109,000 though, isn't the statistical reappraisal, which is what you're doing next year, right?
No, that's just a regular reappraisal, a full reappraisal.
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing a statistical reappraisal next year, that probably won't be 109.
No, no, I have no idea. I don't know those numbers.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure in my head if there's 65,000 in there now roughly. We need to come up with another 45,000 to do, if we were to do a full reappraisal. But if you're using some of that, you see what I'm saying, I'm trying to, trying to understand how we can not have to spend 18,000, add 18,000 dollars to the budget every year. I mean, you, that's where my concern is, is especially with what we're getting from the state, right? We're not getting anything sufficient enough, we're talking about 18,000 dollar increase to the budget, when we've already, the last two years have had massive increases in a lot of different areas. It's not physically feasible for us to continue to add that amount to the budget and be able to, you know, put that burden on the taxpayer. It just, at some point, that's gotta give, right? I mean, that's the problem.
We've been doing the 12 to 1200. And what I was thinking was even if we just increased it to 4,000 or 5,000 this year.
Right.
And I don't know as far as the years, they're saying every six years, but I don't know if that goes back to 2019 or if it will be from 2024.
So, we have more information on this during Budget Time?
I have no idea what the state will have.
Because it sounds like a whole lot I don't know yet, but we're trying to figure, so...
Part of its budget, but at the same time, I mean, my question is, is who, I mean, who is either of our, is our representative or our senator involved in any of this and who we need to reach out to, to start talking to, to push this at the state? Because this is a state issue, this isn't a Groton issue.
Right.
It's every town in the state has the same problem, so we need to take this to the state. And I think, you know, I'm happy to try to advocate to the State House to say, this is not, this is not gonna be feasible financially to towns like Groton.
Right, so Jane Hitchell was the one that I reached out to last time and then, who's her representative?
Joe.
Joe Person. So, those would be the two.
Well, I'm assuming they're not the only town, everybody's gonna be having the same problem, right?
I think it's important.
Correct, but I mean, I think the thing is, what I would worry about is, there are other select boards that are gonna do the same thing. Well, other towns are talking about it, then nobody talks about it, then nothing gets done and then we're SOL, right? I mean, that's what I'm worried about, is, you know, again, $20,000 a year, you know, then you add inflation and you add in all the other things in the budget, that's a big number that we have to come up with in our budget every year. And again, you know, we're, this year already, our tax rates are up because we don't have, you know, we don't have the...
Fund balance.
Fund balance to offset that budget. So, you know, again, yes, $4,000 or $5,000 next year is not $18,000, but in order to meet that delta, to meet that difference, we're gonna have to raise a lot of money. So, that's my concern. Again, if we're not able to do it, we need to, you know, I don't think that's fair to the...
Well, you're getting old.
Well, no, but it's not fair, the townspeople in Groton have to fund that, when we should be reaching out to the state and getting the state corps involved in what they're doing about it.
And I think it's important that you contact the senator and the representative right now that they understand that we're working on budgets and we need to know, you know, sooner than later...
What the plan is.
Kind of what the plan is.
I've got time tomorrow to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will draft an email.
One thought on that real quick would be, you know, maybe it's worth reaching out to like NK Collaborative or Vermont Council on Rural Development in terms of the network effect of other towns and getting a critical mass.
Okay.
People may already be running with this, they may not, but this would be, I think both those groups could be good vehicles for turning this from one town into 45.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good call.
Who was that again?
There's Vermont Council on Rural Development.
Yeah.
And then there's NK Collaborative.
NK Collaborative, yeah.
You know, it used to be Catherine Sims that ran that, she's no longer there, but this Jen Carla.
What is it?
Jen, Jennifer Carla is the executive director there.
Gotcha, okay. Just trying to make notes because I'll reach out with that.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, moving on. So, Fire and Fast, I did get an update from the chief, from Wade. He sent an email that we all, I printed it off, it just says, "We have already had our pumps tested for the year, both engine and tank are passed, waiting on our hoses that we purchased." Because they needed to, I guess you guys needed to buy a bunch of new hoses that failed or whatever. Had rehab vehicle from Littleton Fire to visit and did show and tell. Still process of roof repair. We ordered the snow guards, still waiting on Steve for a ballpark price on temporary repair on the roof for the furnace. Wade Jr. will be checking fire extinguishers, so that answers that question on...
And he came this week.
Okay, good. Once a month in the community building and offices. In the process of purchasing new tires for Engine 1 and possible springs for Engine 1, which I'm not sure, I guess, maybe tires and springs. So, that was our report from the chief. Anything for Fast that we know of? I don't get a report, I'd have to check in with... Constable, do we have anything from the constable or anything? Did he get his timesheet submitted? I did send him a, I did text him and asked him to do that, okay. Library!
Hey.
Hey.
So, I wanted to highlight a few of the really great things that are happening at the library.
Okay.
This morning, the Northeast Council, Kingdom Council on Aging had a presentation. We had a full house and for us, that's 10.
Wow, that's good.
Which is a good number for a program at the library, but we had three representatives from the Council on Aging to share what their services are, what, how they can serve the community of Groton. We had community members that represented, they were caregivers, they were aging people who just wanted to know what the services were. And this was a piloted presentation that Sarah worked with that organization and brought them here. It was, it was really great actually to see connections being made and a member of our community specifically saying, "Here's my situation, here's things that I need," and then saying, "We can help you." So, it was a great, I just wanted to credit Sarah also for making those connections and bringing that here. She's really trying to do that in the hard ways with all kinds of partnerships across the region.
Great.
Including the Northeast Kingdom Community Action Group, NECA, which is a partnership that Jody, the former librarian, developed and then Sarah has taken that and expanded it. They purchased a mobile van unit and piloted again. We were a pilot program this summer for visits, two-hour visits, I think, three or four times over the summer. They brought fresh produce, shelf-stable food items, toiletries for...
Which I saw them when they were there, yeah.
Yeah, and it was, the response has been really great. They, we now have regularly scheduled one time a month, two-hour visits where the van will be in the parking lot. They don't just distribute things, they try to connect people in the community with, and find out what their other needs might be and connect them with services. So, that's another great partnership that Sarah has continued to develop. They come next Wednesday is their next visit and they're bringing winter clothing items along with...
Okay, then how does people, the library just lets people know they're coming or whatever?
Yeah, we try to, Sarah puts out a monthly newsletter, so it's in that, it's on the Facebook page, it's on, we have an Instagram account, she posts it at the library. Front porch forum and the Groton List Serve are also vehicles where we try to get the word out. I think now that it's the second Wednesday of every month, it'll be something that we can communicate to people that is kind of a regular standing time. We did have people showing up in the parking lot on days where they thought it might be coming because they had been there a couple of weeks before. And so, so we did have, have to let people know that this isn't the week they'll be here, but it's definitely, the community has been served well by that, so that's, that's good. The other thing we wanted to let you know about is we received a $2,000 grant from the Children's Literacy Foundation. They are going to provide $2,000 worth of books and host a storyteller event at the library along with a book giveaway. And it's really to promote literacy in the homes and outside of the library. And it's, that date has not been yet determined, but we're encouraged to have it before the end of the year, so, you know, more, more on that. I think Sarah is focused on beefing up an early reader collection with the monies. I also wanted to acknowledge that we do have a really dedicated group of volunteers who come in regularly to assist Sarah. That being said, over the last year, due to some, we expanded the number of open hours without increasing Sarah's paid time, she took some of her admin time and instead opened the doors. But with that, we have nearly doubled the number of patron visits to the library over the past year, which is great news. We have some regular, very regular visitors and that's great because it's a, you know, welcome area, people come in and are able to spend time there. But we're looking at the possibility of additional staffing. One of the things that did occur over the past couple of weeks and maybe, there's maybe a little buzz about it around town, but there was some behavior that had to be addressed and that Sarah managed that well, but we're also looking at working with Rural Edge to implement some new safety measures at the, at the libraries, some mirrors in different locations so that because of the configuration of rooms there, it's difficult to see around corners and this is the other consideration too for adding possible staffing is the volunteers are there for not the whole time, like the doors are open. And that, we're, we're trying to figure out like what's the best way of moving forward to make sure that it's a safe space for all patrons, anybody that comes in the door and also for the volunteers and staff that are, that are there. We're working on what that might look like and we'll probably present that with our proposed budget for next year. Oh, in addition to that, we have a policy review committee that is working to look at all of our policies, but in particular and highest on the list is our patron responsibility sort of policies. And we're looking at other libraries and seeing what they have in place. Ours is not as robust as it could be, but that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
Okay, that's a water stuff.
It's wet.
And make the, I don't know if DEP has anything that they're willing to have.
Yeah, I mean, I would add that there wasn't an unnerving situation at the library.
Okay.
And out of that, we realized that it's probably not the best idea to have a single librarian there by herself anymore.
Okay.
Being dealt with in good ways. Authorities were a part of it. It was unsettling. We have situations where the doors can't be locked from the inside, like you guys had here, we're looking at changing that. We have to go through Rural Edge because we don't own the building. So, we have a long-term plan and a short-term plan.
Which, Royal Edge, we're having trouble, the town's working on stuff with Royal Edge too, so...
Sarah has a really good relationship with them, but it is, it's a roadblock.
Okay.
And so, that's complicated. And we are going to be putting in place, Sarah will be putting together a schedule so that she can be looking for new volunteers to help her in the library, so she's not there by herself at certain times.
Okay. What about, we had a small discussion on camera, stuff, stuff with the town, is that another thing that would be...
We're talking about that.
Yeah.
And waiting for, you know, what to get, who pays for it, how it gets put in because you don't own the building, all that stuff.
Right.
I think it's time, she can't be down there by herself. In the world the way it is right now, it doesn't feel like...
We continue to have more discussion about incidents that we haven't had.
I knew you guys wouldn't understand, if you, anybody wants to be a part of the volunteering, then, you know, if you know somebody or if you yourselves want to be a part of it, that would be good as well. And the idea that instead of counting on volunteers, which is a lot of, you know, wrangling isn't the right word, but it's a lot of work, a lot of managing, to manage volunteers.
Right.
It seems that we need to put somebody in payroll that Sarah will be able to know is going to be there.
Okay.
And we had already finished our budget. We were relying on some endowment money to do a bunch of things this year, but we're gonna look at it again now. And, you know, we have picked it really good, but unfortunately, we, you may be looking at a library budget that's gone so that we have some paid staffing.
Okay. Every, nothing's going down.
I hate to say it, I hate to say it.
That's...
I think when, you know, one of the things that we need to keep in mind with the conversation regarding cameras and that is, is patron privacy. We were bound by some privacy rules regarding, you know, disclosure of information and so it's, so we do have Vermont Department of Libraries, it's great, they have lots of resources for us to access, but one of the things that, you know, that would change is sort of the feel of the place, you know?
I know, but unfortunately, that's the world we live in today and it's...
I mean, it's possible to do it.
I think, I think it's...
Completely, it would, you know, but the, but there, there are a lot of doors at the library and their fire exists, so, you know, you have to be able to get out of them. But when you do, they don't necessarily close. And so, somebody might come in the front and run out the back, if you don't really know. And we have to work with Rural Edge in order to try to make that happen. So, it seems like, at least in the short run, more staff is the way to go.
Okay. Can you find more staff though? I mean...
We haven't looked yet, I mean, we're gonna rely on Wayne, who is, is there a lot and is a trustee, but, you know, we haven't budgeted for that. So, hopefully, we will be able to find that, otherwise, we'll have to take a different approach.
Okay. No, I'm sorry, that, that's where, what happened.
We wanted to get, we wanted to get to know, we know, we support the library, the library's part of the town and...
Well, you know, I think we want, we want the library because it is, you know, it's a centerpiece of the town, you know, we want the library to be a warm and welcoming place for patrons, but that also means we want it to be a safe place for people to come to. So, you know, there may be some trade-off that has to come with providing appropriate safety measures.
But people can do both.
So, and I think you can, I think it's, it's just, it's a, it's a balance, you have to strike with that, so...
Yeah, and we gotta just advocate a little bit and, you know, take care of our own work and just down and...
I know sometimes it can be a barrier though, but, you know, have we... I, I know sometimes it can be a barrier though, um, but, you know, have, have we, have you guys looked at the possibility of, you know, volunteer training or things that can help, you know? Cause I know there are specific situations, there are specific things that, you know, we.
Sounds like you're just getting started on the whole thing and researching it and trying to figure out which way to go and how to go. Okay, well, keep us updated.
Yeah. Yeah. I will just add, one of the things about staffing is, um, we would, um, try to staff it in a way where we would be adding programs of some type as well. So it's not just another person, you know, there observing and somebody engaging with.
Right, right, right. Okay, okay, good.
Aaron, do you know, if somebody pulls a fire alarm, save the library, what happens? Where does it?
There's no, it, it, it only goes off.
That doesn't go to 911? That isn't set up?
The Rural Edge.
No, it does. Rural Edge does. Yes, they did. Yeah, there is a alarm system there.
So if you pull an alarm.
I'll point to fall folies last year when the fire got pulled in properly, yes, so.
Somebody, it happened at the community building. Somebody pulled a fire alarm and it went to 911. So that's what we think happens. It doesn't go anywhere else. And the fire department is all going through 911 now.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, cause you get dispatched out as soon as that goes through Twin State and blah, blah, blah. And then they arrive and figure out what's going on. Cause I remember being things down there. Okay.
Yeah.
Did the sprinkler system go off when that happened?
Yeah, cause they had a fire in the, well, no.
No, no.
No, but.
It doesn't.
No, but if a room.
If a room could catch, yeah, they're, they set themselves.
Right, but if somebody pulls the alarm, okay.
And if one sprinkler head activates, only one sprinkler head activates.
Not all of them.
So, yeah, so it's not like the whole building.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That would be horrendous if somebody pulled it and they all.
Then was that, then was that thought? Because.
No, I know, I just.
We've been told, if you really need help, call fire department. You guys are around.
Pull the fire alarm. Really? At the end of the day.
And so we had, we had that conversation and, but we weren't sure what would happen. Well, the sprinkler was a lock or whatever, so, yeah. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So zoning administrator, uh, I did get, he didn't send, he just sent an update to my messenger. I wish he would send me email, that is a regular email. Um, trying to think here, Dan, tonight, I won't be at the meeting tonight. He said, please ask Dorothy about the pictures again, which you already, I'm assuming. Did we cover that with the pictures?
I think it's a work in progress. It's not going to be all of the pictures.
Okay.
So what did he say? Just, just give it to them?
Thank you.
Yeah, good to hear.
Uh, he, uh, he just said, ask Dorothy about the pictures again. Uh, they are still not on and I know she thought they would be on this week.
No, I said I get it to Newark this weekend and I gotta do their magic and get it coming. So hopefully, um, Adam from Newark said he'd get back to me this week. So that was yesterday. So I'm hoping I will get ahold of him tomorrow and before Friday.
Okay, all right. Uh, he said couch has been moved, which, and Lisa and I got letter put together, but didn't get to send it. Someone must have spoken to him from the fire department or something. Doesn't matter, it got taken care of.
So, so there's a letter in there for you all to read and sign.
Okay, which we talked about at the last meeting. Um, going to file paperwork with state regarding Royal Edge and they're not taking care of things. We'll keep you posted, which we are continuing.
The septic, the roof and the.
Yeah, and nothing is happening.
He's taking it to the state.
Where's this at? Which?
The mold.
Is in above the library.
That's why when they talk about Royal Edge, I find it hard to believe anything's going to happen because we can't even get them to do the maintenance that needs to happen, so.
Same with the septic, is that shared septic?
The septic thing.
Yeah.
And the roof that they said was getting fixed. And the mold was, they had a certain deadline.
They had thirty, I think they had thirty days or something.
Did the sewer, the sewer never got fixed and dealt with? Like?
I don't know. I mean, I think it got like temporarily.
Yeah, but nobody's, yeah. So anyways, that's a continuous, so that was the update from?
Yeah, he said he was gonna write a letter to the state with all those three things and present everything.
Okay. All right.
I'm assuming he tried to call Patrick Shattuck or something like that.
Oh, yeah, he's talked to everybody.
Yeah. And Dan's really good about all that stuff.
He will exhaust every resource before he, yeah.
And he's, he retired, has he retired from his?
Oh, it's already happened.
Yeah, good, so.
So the second time he retired?
Yeah. House officer, did, he didn't say anything about anything to do with that?
Nothing with that, okay.
Okay, so that's good. Maintenance?
He did give out the last, those two permits, so those are done. So as of right now, no more building permits.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate it, great.
Yeah.
Maintenance, do we have anything for maintenance?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So Green Mountain Power came with two big trucks, a van and then, and then I think another small truck. They're all out by our mailbox, standing around, looking for the poles. And I went running out and said, it's, you know, two poles up. I gave them the pole number.
They're still flashing.
Well, oh, it is tonight? Cause this happened today.
Yeah.
Oh, today.
We'll, we'll check out.
No, this morning, this morning it was, so that's why.
This light's not on.
No, so.
Well, it came on, it came on.
That's a funny story. It comes on. Cause in the morning, when I go down through in the dark, it's on.
Well, I thought it was because it came on.
That's hilarious.
Well, so I ran out there, blah, 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 told them where it was. So they all moved two poles. And then I said, Anne, you're gonna take this old pole out before spring. And they said, he said, he didn't know anything about it. And I said, well, I've talked to so-and-so many times. And he said, okay, I'll get it on the list. So we'll be back. We can't do that today. Although they had two trucks, a van and another truck.
Who's list this, who's list this is? Oh my gosh.
So.
Good job, at least they got maybe the flashing light thing.
Maybe, they were doing something, so.
They stopped traffic and we're out there. Forgot about this one though.
Well, I don't know what the deal is, cause it, remember when you said it's not on, then I can go through in the morning and it's on?
Yeah.
In the dark.
It's a delay.
Yeah, some of them for.
Why would it be a delay? Wouldn't it be just a photo?
Has anybody seen the wall field fences being worked on?
It's done.
It's done?
I already looked at it this afternoon.
How have they looked?
Well, that one, that one looks, it's like, it looks brand new. It's all.
Pufferfield?
Pufferfield.
That's what we talked about?
Yeah, puffer, yes, pufferfield's all done and whatever. And I'm, I'm assuming this one's done, but it's still not.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all tied up, it's all fixed, the best that it can be fixed. It's still not great.
Yeah.
Oh, I, that's wonderful.
Oh, yeah, the gates all are done, everything is fixed, everything, it looks like it should.
Okay.
Looks great.
And then I haven't heard from Tim Corey at all. So, just saying. It's been, just been a week, so.
But we'll, I'll, I'll be seeing him again.
Okay.
So, um.
Okay, that's it for maintenance, for me.
IT?
Gary's still plugging away at all his chores.
Okay, good. Um, planning commission, do we have anything, nothing?
Link lab, yeah, so.
He said that he's back at the next meeting.
Oh, right, okay, good. Uh, NEK, CUD, we did the board, but is there, what do we?
There is an NEK broadband, CUD update, so.
Okay.
Um, I sent you an update la, uh, back in September, um, I'll just give you the maps. So, this is two things. One is the.
We're gonna have broadband next week?
Not here. Other parts of the kingdom possibly.
Oh, really?
Yeah, stuff's happening. Um, so, uh, the email update I sent in, in September, uh, had to do with really two things. One was the Groton, Harper, the Harper built out, okay? Um, so they're kind of coming down through Peachum, they're doing pole, they're hanging up fiber. Um, last week, that was cool. NEK broadband was allocating 30K to kind of connect, once they get down here, connect it to the OLT, uh, shed that will, that is in Groton. Um, and then that opens up the process of slicing, casting, all that sort of stuff. So, um, from Peachum down, Great Road, Minor Hill, that zone you, that you see on your map that's shaded, um, will, are looking to get service probably in about four months.
Okay.
Once the process runs through. And, um, so that's that group right there. So that's progressing. Um, if you remember back in June, uh, there was a GMP pole make-ready cost.
Issue, yeah.
That was like seventy times normal that came in.
Yeah.
In terms of a, an invoice or a bid to do it. Um, so at that time, with community, with the USDA Community Connect Grant, we kind of said, all right, well, nobody budgeted for that amount. And this would be, this is instrumental for connecting, bringing it down into the, into the village, um, and then bringing it, uh, up Powder Spring Road, up Anis Road, okay? But the GMP costs were just exorbitant, um, exorbitant. Um, so what we decided, or NEK broadband decided to do was put it into our USDA Community Connect Grant, okay? And slide it in there because it was hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, okay.
So, we're now kind of, that, that part is kind of contingent on USDA Community Connect Grant.
Okay.
Okay. So the latest on that, uh, in September, we had heard, um, we originally were thinking it could be as early as the end of August to get word on that. That's the 2.1 million dollar USDA part. NEK broadband was put in, uh, over like another $900,000 and we'd connect the rest, most of the rest of Groton, okay, with broadband. Um, so, uh, the debt, we thought we may hear it here as early as the end of August. Uh, in mid to late September, we heard maybe some winners will be notified in October, the bulk in November and some in December. Last week, I heard that the USDA, USDA has, uh, put some of their, uh, put their evaluations of the applications on hold because they're trying to sort out some issues on their end. Um, that we're looking at probably December or January, likely January, until we find out about that grant.
Okay.
Um, so if we get that grant, um, then, you know, it's going to be money flowing in to cover all that GMP extra stuff. And then the maps that I shared back in June, which essentially is Westbound 302, Northern State Forests, that sort of stuff, okay? Um, but, so we're in a, we're in a little bit of a funky area. Stuff is happening. There's a group that's getting stuff.
Well, at least they're still in the process of getting it to here right now, so that's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, yeah, it's, I think, I mean, I think it's just rural broadband is hard and it's costly. And some of the workforce stuff and some of the supply stuff, supply chain sort of stuff to slow down some of their stuff. Um, and then some of these costs are coming in in there. So we're trying to, we, I say we, it's NEK broadband and I, sort of, you know, and it's mostly NEK broadband, trying to figure out the best solution.
Okay.
So we've got a track for, I don't know how many homes, you see the homes on that map, there's the little squares. Um, I think they added one or two from the original Art for Map. Um, they have a clear line of sight right now. And then, uh, a lot is riding on the Community Connect Grant. If we don't get the Community Connect Grant, I mean, we're still in consideration. It's, I've heard it's, you know, very competitive. Um, a lot of people that didn't get this USDA Reconnect Grant, kind of put their applications into Community Connect. I think the good thing we have, or the thing we have going for us is we built our application around all the requirements of Community Connect with surveys and lots of town stuff. So I still feel good about that, but at the end of the day, it's a very competitive process.
So we don't really know.
We don't know. We won't know until we get the word. Um, uh, and if we don't get that grant, we're probably right now looking at a B grant. A B grant is a federal program, um, it's part of the infrastructure bill. It's like forty-two and a half billion dollars going out to open up access to broadband. And so the Vermont, I believe the Vermont E dollars don't get allocated and distributed until the end of 2024. So it'll be the end of next year. Um, right now, that's our fallback. If USDA Community Connect Grant doesn't happen, I think we just hope for the best and, and.
Okay.
And if not, we're probably looking at a year-ish delay, probably a little longer.
Which the money we spent to get, was to get broadband down here, really?
Yeah, it was to get, it was to do this map, but it was also to go up Powder Spring.
Okay.
And then Righgate came in because we came in and they allocated Art for Money, which was to do 302. Righgate's in the same bucket we are with the GMP pools. Um, because the GMP crazy, excuse, it's not crazy, the very high, uh, uh, invoice that came in or proposal that came in impacts them as well. So they're in the same boat we are right with that. Um, and so, but the original plan was kind of come through here, uh, run through the town, run it through the village a little bit, run up Powder Springs, run, run up all the way to Anis Road.
Okay.
So that part's been, um, that second part has been impacted by the GMP numbers. I, I think we're thinking in June that, hey.
So how does that exactly happen? I mean, nobody did the research on all this and then all of a sudden?
Nobody expected seventy times normally.
Well, like, okay.
And, and I think what you said previously was that it has something to do with agreements that they have with other carriers, correct?
I don't know. There, there, there is an issue of bird's nest and complexity.
Well, Washington Electric wasn't like that.
Well, GMP is basically saying the pools in Groton are super, super duper complex in terms of things on.
They're too complex to read, but.
Okay.
But there's, I mean, there's these bird nests that are on, I don't, I'm not in the industry. I don't know what's considered super complex versus something that's considered.
And I guess it doesn't really matter. It's just kind of interesting how things fall out when we're trying to get.
Yeah, it's, um, and that's, I think, part of the reason of trying to get this done as soon as we can too.
Okay.
Cause I think the longer you go down these roads, the more interesting scenario it could possibly have.
Okay, well, we appreciate the update.
That's where we're at.
Okay, good.
So as of right now, Mike, this highlighted area is what's getting done?
Yeah, so that's where.
Four months.
Yeah, I think about four months, maybe think the beginning of mud season, that sort of thing.
Okay.
When there will be the ability, when there will be the ability to actually say, hey, I want to sign up and get the service.
Yeah.
So I mean, the only question I've got is the village, right? So what, what this indicates, you know, between the Community Connect application area and the, the backbone that's being run to the OLT, there's still, I mean, as part of Powder Spring, there's still a section of 302, you know? Obviously, the portion that's gonna go east to.
Righgate.
Righgate, but, you know, there's a section here that's the other half of the village out through to the state.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, and that won't be part of this for months, yeah.
Gotcha.
No, I mean, what?
Well, no, no, no.
But it's not even part of the.
It's not even part of the Community Connect application either.
Yeah, it kind of, well.
It isn't, it isn't.
It is and it isn't, so.
So you'd have to, you still have to run, get recovered for, you still have to run the line through that area to get to that connection area.
So there's gonna be pass by. So we've got the library and we've got the Rural Edge space here designated as community center, okay? So if we get that, we're gonna connect it. All right, we do, kind of do the map so that we can run behind the buildings, okay? To do that. And we've got the blessings to move forward with that in our application. What that means is there'll be residents, there will be addresses that get passed by as they go, okay?
Which means that there's a connection.
Which means you can sign up for service essentially, right?
Gotcha.
So, um, what was I gonna say? Um, yeah, the 30K last week, NEK broadband, that 30K was part of this USDA Community Connect Grant now, but they pulled that out so that they can connect Minor Hill Zone into the OLT, which was critical for lighting up that whole zone.
Right, 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 okay.
So they've kind of moved that forward.
Um, I, I do note too, the other thing, Mike, is there was some questions, concerns from Dan in reference to the OLT cabinet placement, et cetera. I don't know if those got answered.
What was the timing on those? Is that reasonable?
The last couple, last month.
Yeah, the size and where, also the permit was put from one place and they put it in a wholly different.
First time hearing of that.
Yeah.
And the pole didn't.
Yeah, if it's, if, if it's possible to have somebody reach out to Dan and just touch base with them, maybe from.
Well, it doesn't even, um, done now.
It's done now, but yeah, I think just to make sure.
He made it sound like they might have to move it or something.
Or they were adding to it, or it was gonna be larger than what was on the pad.
No.
No, I think it was a small.
What they put on the pad is nothing compared to what the pad was.
Well, I think something more is coming.
Yeah, I think it's adding.
That's what I was gonna say. I think he said something about.
So I don't know, if you just, if you got a chance to touch base with.
I've got these little, you guys can get these little breadcrumbs you're giving me here. So what, what is the issue?
So he, he said that there was something, that there was an issue with what was approved in the zoning permit. Um, he, he has inspected the site from what I recall. He said he had, he had inspected the site and had a question or concern about the location. Also, when the. Also, when the initial part of the cabinet was placed, um, he had gone out to the site and there was a comment made about that there was more to be added to that space beyond what was there currently.
Okay, and the pole that was set.
And the pole is too close to the property, yeah.
Right.
But I think he said they got Green Mountain Power, whoever got, oh.
Easement?
Yeah, varies.
Variants.
But it may just be good to have somebody connect with him to clarify and maybe meet him at the site to just review it.
All right. Yeah, I'll reach out.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
That's good news and bad news and a sort of news, but it is, it's news, right? Okay.
Moving forward, that's the.
Infrastructure project, do we have anything on?
Yeah, so I, I had reached out to Nate once we received that, um, bill.
Yep.
Um, to see if he, um.
Great, Ellen.
If he could look it over and see if this is, was in line with what he was thinking. And he called me today and said, in twenty twenty-two, um, we were, the resource assessment was going to be thirty-two hundred and we've never paid that. And then the phase one was going to be around ten thousand. So we got the bill for nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, he says, that's good.
Good.
So.
Okay.
And then, um, they're all, all the phase one and the ARAs all been submitted and, and they're still waiting. On the, what, VDHP?
Okay.
Says.
Okay.
I think, but USDA's been sent everything, so.
Gotcha.
I think it's just waiting, but.
Okay, good.
Did he say how long we'll wait for that easement getting signed off on?
No, he just, I told them what we had discovered last week with Mike Namias sending it to maybe a correct person. And he said, oh, that's good, so we're just, we'll wait. And he said, we can still put it out to bid even without that.
Right, right, yeah.
And we still.
We just won't be able to break ground until.
Yeah, we just, no, we'll give it some time, I mean, really, just.
Good.
Just a matter of connecting the right person, I don't think they're gonna have a care in the world about that.
Right. So I'll stay on top of it.
Good, all right, thank you. Um, cool. Open to the public and other business, I know we had, um, we can do the buckaroos thing too with that. So the buckaroos letter that hadn't been updated and.
It's town used land Gary was talking about last meeting.
Right.
We up, hadn't been updated since like ninety-four.
Yep.
So, um, him and I worked on it, getting the terminology a little more current and I think it's correct, so he would like to have that signed off on, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can sign that, we'll do the orders and stuff.
Okay, yeah. Good, and is there any other business or anything public or?
Nope.
Okay, good, uh, speed sign, we already covered that because we got the speed study, so James is coming in to, oh, you weren't, but.
No, I, I got the emails.
Yeah, so he's gonna, yeah, so.
I'm getting a copy of it too.
I thought it would be good for him to come in and explain the whole thing.
Yeah, perfect.
See, I thought this paperclip was holding together everything to do about invasive species and there it is and a whole bunch of other stuff too.
All the carry stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My package.
So, uh, fire alarm, have we done the covers yet?
Yeah, I found them, yeah.
You did?
Yeah, I found them, so I'll just get, get them ordered or find out if, um, CED has got them down in Woodville and all.
Okay.
They're like fifty bucks a piece.
How many do we need?
I think just two.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Okay.
Are there double ones? Because they're, what, I think they are close together.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I didn't like go any further because they're like screwed to the wall, so I wanted to come here and look at it and see and make sure.
Okay, good.
That's great.
Good, awesome.